Call to order of the December 18th, 2019 Frederick County Planning Commission. This time I ask someone to join in a moment of silence, please. At this time, first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion? No changes?
So I moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's been adopted. The next item is our committee reports. Our first report we have is from Frederick Water, and I believe Mr. Oats is filling in for Mr. Unger on that one.
Yes, sir. We met last night. You know, Pecan Water Supply Plan update. Site plan went out for review to the county agencies today. The Virginia Department of Health approval is expected within the next two weeks. The pipeline for that is already approved, and the goal was to have this out to bid probably by the end of January, first of February, and award the contract in March. The second one is we adopted a resolution for the issuance of a $35 million bond to pay for all this. Good interest rate, no penalties for paying it off early. We're hoping we can have that paid off within 10 years. And for the November operations report, we have nearly 17,000 connections now. Pumped just over 3 million gallons a day out of the Deal Plant, 1.7 out of the Anderson Plant. We purchased 900,000 from the city of Winchester, and a rainfall for November was .58 inches, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oats. The next one on there is our CPPC, our Comprehensive Plans Committee. Mr. Mohn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on December 9th, and we reviewed the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvements Plan and recommended that it move forward with a favorable consideration by the Planning Commission to the Board. That'll be coming to the full commission for discussion after the first of the year.
Thanks, sir. I'll jump over to our visitor from Winchester Planning, our liaison, Mr. Pfeifer.
So we had four public hearings, three for CUPs. We had two unfavorable recommendations, one for a short-term rental in the city. It was a tenant that was going to be doing an Airbnb, not the owner, and then also for a dumpster pad on Bellevue Avenue. Those are both unfavorable recommendations. Then we had a favorable recommendation for Winchester Baseball to utilize the blue and gray mall warehouse portion for batting cages. And then we had a favorable recommendation for the small cell telecommunication as a text amendment. And then we worked on our comp plan a little bit, and we are going to visit it a little bit more in January.
Thank you, sir. Nice to have you. There's no one from liaison from our Board of Supervisors, and we'll move on to our next item on agenda, Citizen Comments. This portion is open to anyone who would like to speak before the Planning Commission for items that's not on the agenda tonight. So at this time, I'll open the Citizen Comment portion of our meeting. Seeing no one, we'll close the portion of the Citizen Comments. We'll move into our first item. It is a public hearing item for rezoning number 05-19 for Martinsburg Pike LLC. And I believe I have Mr. Bishop presenting that tonight.
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse myself on the next two items, Items Four and Items Five.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, contrary to the agenda, I am not Mrs. Perkins.
We'll leave it at that?
As you know, this is an application to rezone 1.724 acres from RA rural areas to the B2 general business district with associated proffers. Site is actually made up of three parcels. One of those is vacant, one has a residential use on it, and the third parcel has a block building that was formerly used as a general store. And they are located at 2674 and 2682 Martinsburg Pike. If you're heading north toward West Virginia, they're about 1,000 feet south on your right of Stevenson Road. Turning your attention to the screen on your left, you can see the three parcels are highlighted. They are bordered by a mobile home park, MH1 rezoning, MH1 zoning that is, and then also a mix of B2 and M1 property. And of course, RA immediately to the north. The site is located within the northeast Frederick Land Use Area Plan area. It does identify, that plan does identify these properties for a mixed-use industrial/office land use. The owner intends to operate a restaurant, actually, in the existing commercial structure. Site was previously utilized, as I noted earlier, as a general store. In general, the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with your 2035 Comprehensive Plan because obviously a restaurant is not business or industrial. However, given that it's bordered by residential property and has residential property also nearby it, the request for commercial may be acceptable. Here you just have a depiction of the planned land use, which does show for commercial industrial. With this request, the applicant does have proffers. You'll see it's a fairly simple, a small rezoning, so a fairly simple proffer statement. The interior lot lines will be vacated, so they'll be combining these three parcels into one. The driveway connection from the existing residential use to Route 11 will be eliminated. And actually, if I can go back to the graphic, that you'll see you've got, next to what was the general store, you've got a fairly wide-open entrance, and then you have that residential driveway, and those two are going to be basically replaced by a standard commercial entrance that'll be approved by VDOT, and of course pending all regulatory approvals by yourselves and the Board of Supervisors and VDOT. In terms of right-of-way, the applicant's going to proffer upfront 6 and 1/2 foot. What that would accomplish is, if we can get funding, to go ahead and take that from the existing status to a four-lane divided as a transition to the ultimate six-lane divided. That would put us in a position where we have that right-of-way in hand. But since it is comp planned for eventually a six-lane, though we know that that's further down the road, they've also reserved an additional 12 feet on top of that 6 and 1/2 feet so that such time as we were able to get funding to go actually to a full six-lane, that right-of-way would be available to us at that time. In addition, the owners of this property are going to donate or will cause to be donated to Frederick County the sum of $310.40, or 10 cents per square foot of commercial space for the impacts to fire and rescue services. And there you see a draft layout, and you'll see the entrance has been redrawn into what's today a standard commercial entrance, and they will have to go through the full site plan process. Finally, following public hearing, since this is a public hearing item, we are seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors where they will ultimately determine its fate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Any questions for Mr. Bishop? Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Bishop, is the right-of-way that has been agreed upon in the proffer sufficient for the total expansion?
We did coordinate with VDOT on what the ultimate need would be, and that was actually how these distances were derived.
Would there ever be need for a turn lane in addition to the right-of-way?
Not without a intensification of use from what they're doing. And if that were the case, if you were to get some sort of a new development, that's actually something VDOT's able to require under the site plan process, so it would be dealt with at that time.
Okay.
I would also note, since I failed too earlier, the applicant is here. Mr. Lanzetta and his representative, Mr. Lewis, is here for him as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Would the applicant, would come forward, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Lewis, Painter Lewis, representing the project. I don't have a lot to add. I will say that it is a restaurant use, however, it's limited to 16 seats, so it's a small use. Probably be a lot of takeout. I think there's a development across the street called Easy Living and one down the road called Snowden Bridge, and I hear they're hungry for pizza. So I think it's a terrific, I think it's a terrific reuse of the old Oats grocery, at least in the interim, until something else happens out there and it's more office-industrial. Any questions?
Any question for Mr. Lewis? Put one out. I don't know if it's a question. I think that it's, the profits you put forward are very good, we work with VDOT and what have you, but I'd just go on the record and say in the 10 cents per square foot somewhere along the line for the fire and rescue of $310.40 seems extremely low in this type of situation, considering we're generating, revenue generating businesses such that we will have there. As you say yourself, there's demand out there. So I would like to, at some point, take a look at our 10 cents per square foot for fire and rescue. I think that's a very, very low number there, so if you, consideration to take a look at that as we move forward. That's my comments. But thank you. This is a public hearing. It's time I open a public hearing. Anyone like to come forward and speak to this matter? Please come forward and state your name and matched jail district. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Seeing here no discussion, this is a Stonewall District?
If there's no other discussion, I move for approval, rezoning 5-19 for Martinsburg Pike LLC.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second. I'll start down with Mr. Marston on the end.
Marston, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Holden, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Turplin, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Mohn, yes.
And chair vote, yes. Motion carries. It goes to the Board of Supervisors on our January 22nd meeting, 2020. Thank you. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is also a public hearing item. It's a rezoning number 0719 for General Harvest LC. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm also not Candace this evening, but I will do my best. This is an application to rezone approximately 1.204 acres from the B2 general business district.
Christmas. I got to see this guy. How are you?
I know, I don't.
God bless.
We'll have a meet and greet later.
Again, this is a...
That's the family here.
Mr. Klein, continue.
Yes, this is a rezoning from the B2 general business district to the B3 industrial transition district with proffers. Many of you are familiar with this site. It was previously utilized as the Texas Steakhouse, which is now closed, and its intended user is Discount Tire. The subject property is located at 120 Front Royal Pike. Directing your attention to the screen, the subject property is on the corner of Millwood Pike and Front Royal Pike. You guys will, are quite familiar with this site, I believe. Again, it was the former home of the Texas Steakhouse. It's in front of the Travel Lodge and just north of the IHOP and those businesses. The site is located within the limits of the Sensony Eastern Urban Area Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and this property's been identified with a commercial land use designation. In general, the existing B2 zoning and the proposed B3 zoning are consistent with the current land use, and they're supported by the Comprehensive Plan. However, the plan states that this area should be designed specifically to accommodate and promote highway commercial land uses. Again, directing your attention to the screen, this is our long-range land use map. You can see that the entire property, including the Discount Tire site, is, again, identified as highway commercial. With this request, the applicant has proffered the following: land use restrictions, specifically prohibiting landscape and horticultural services, local and suburban transit services, motor freight, transportation and warehousing, transportation by air, utility facilities and their accessory uses, drive-in motion picture theaters, and tractor truck and tractor-trailer truck parking. When used in these proffers, there's also the inclusion of a preliminary landscape plan, and it provides a comprehensive landscape for the site, and that's referenced in Exhibit One. The owner proffers that its development of the property will be in conformity with the preliminary landscape plan provided, and the owner hereby proffers a monetary contribution of 10 cents per developed building square footage to the fire and rescue services. Again, directing your attention to the screen, this is the proposed landscape plan. I can see the building is set back from both Millwood Pike and Front Royal Pike. They're going to maintain the existing lawn at the front of the property and then provide the requisite landscaping, including shade trees and screening of the parking areas. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on this rezoning request. Mr. Ty Lawson is here representing the applicant, has our representatives from Discount Tire, and they have a couple of slides for you as well.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions for Mr. Klein?
I just got one. How's actual vehicle access to the facility gonna work?
Vehicle access is provided at the light that's south on Front Royal Pike that's shared with the access to IHOP, Cracker Barrel, the Travel Lodge, and the commercial and office space in the front, so they actually have an access easement through the property to their parcel.
Is there a direct route through there, or do they have to go through their parking lots?
There's a direct, there's like some internal private streets that allow access to that Look at the aerial map. You can kind of see their site, again, is highlighted in blue, and they would have access through here, going around that office and commercial building out to the light that's on Front Royal Pike.
And how long has the Steakhouse been vacant or shut?
It's been gone several years, at least two years, which is the kind of baseline standard, but it's been closed a number of years, and they've had difficulty turning the site over, from what I understand.
Would this generate less traffic through the other businesses than the Steakhouse did?
I'll let the...
Be able to say?
I'll let the applicant speak specifically to their operations and kind of what their comings and goings are, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrosi. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Klein. Would the applicant, Mr. Lawson, representative, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ty Lawson here on behalf of the applicant. I also have with me a couple of civil engineers from Kimley Horn to answer any questions that you may have. To your question, Mr. Ambrosi, it is, there is an access, hopefully you can see it better, and it's actually a paved road that I believe was installed by Mr. Akins Senior way back when this was built. And there were some questions raised as we went through the comment period with staff and actually found that those two ways were dedicated to the county, I believe back in the 80s. So the access is assured. As far as the number of trips, significantly less than what Texas Steakhouse enjoyed. It's just an entirely different operation. It's an infill site. We have some slides that'll show you the landscaping, which is, we've proffered substantial compliance with that. It'll be a lot more attractive than what it is now. But a little bit about Discount Tire. Founded in 1960, it's based in Arizona, but it's all over the country. They specialize in retail sale of passenger car, light truck tires and wheels. They do about 40 of these a year nationwide, and they're in the Richmond area and the Tidewater area, haven't made it up this way just yet. Important to point out, they don't do mechanical work. I know Valvoline was approved on the other side of IHOP. They were doing oil and the things that you would see in that type of a store. This does not do this. Just tires. That's all they do. Very customer-oriented, no outside storage. Vehicles go in the bays and then they leave, so there's not a lot of clutter outside, vehicles stored outside, tires stored outside. They don't do that. That's not the way they operate. Anticipate creating 10 to 15 new jobs here. Annual sales around $4 million. And then the other thing that was interesting, their hours of operation, 8 to 6, Monday through Friday, Saturday, 8 to 5, closed on Sundays. And their corporate theme is not open at night or on Sundays because we want our employees to have time with their families. This is nationwide, and they intend to do that here as well. This is a slide of the plan, shows the landscaping. The existing Texas Steakhouse will be removed, and it's a new building. And then these are some of the elevations. And again, we're here also with the civil engineers, if you all have any questions about it.
Thank you. Any question, Mr. Lawson? I just, maybe it's not a question for you, Ty, maybe it's for the civil engineer, but from what I'm looking at this overlay, the birdside wheel, the door bays are at the rear, right? They're facing to the west? Correct. So you will not, those, the bays will not face, hey, towards Front Royal Pike or Millwood, right?
I'll let them respond. These show the elevations and the perspective from north, south, east and west, but I'll let them respond.
Okay.
You may have some bays, but I'll let them address that.
Okay. I thought that was east. Okay.
If you like.
Yeah, please. Thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Like I said, my name is Cutter Sidner. I'm a licensed civil engineer out of Richmond and have worked with Discount Tire for years. So we handle the site planning and landscape aspects of their plan. So, works like I thought it did. So when you're looking at this, the bays are facing Front Royal Pike, they, because they need access into that area where the parking and the drive aisles are. If you look at that right-of-way champ for where the intersection is, that really forces the layout of the site to sit as it is. The building is actually about 150 feet set back from the road. It'll be much further back than the existing building that's there today. And we've kind of highlighted the green on here and showed some of the landscaping, which we proposed a buffer width that's above and beyond what's required and as well as plantings to comply with the Comprehensive Plan and that desire for enhanced landscaping in this district and along this corridor.
Okay.
So, yeah, happy to answer any other questions about the site plan or the landscaping as well.
I guess I was confused because on your elevation you provided, you show your east elevation is not having the doors facing 84, Front Royal Pike, but the west, so...
Yeah, I think, so if you were, if you were standing looking east, you would be looking down on the building from Travel Lodge from the site plan perspective. So, yeah, I understand that that's a little bit confusing. So what that means is that this east elevation that's shown here on this plan is what you'll see if you were at Travel Lodge looking east, and if you were standing in our proposed parking lot, or then you would be looking at the west elevation here.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. This time I open the public hearing. Anyone like to come forward to speak to this matter? It's, please come forward, state your name and matched jail district.
Good evening. My name is Steve Parrish. I happen to live in the Back Creek District, but we have properties in the Shawnee. We, I represent the Akins Group, which is the office building, and also Rohan Shaw, which has the traffic, which has the Travel Lodge and the Fairfield Inn and Suites. He could not attend tonight, but he did ask me to bring a letter to you all, and if you don't mind, I'll just hand it out.
Sure.
Rohan and I spoke about this, and he regrets that he was not able to be here. He's out of town today. But his opinion, he owns the Travel Lodge and also the Fairfield Inn, and his opinion basically feels like, as you can read from the letter, it's going to diminish his property value with the B3. Neither one of us, that's Akins nor the Travel Lodge, Rohan, is opposed to Discount Tires. What we are opposed to is the zoning difference between a B2 and the B3. And that's a real concern when you have a professional office building. We try to get tenants in there, and what the, what that B3 zoning could be in the future. And I really appreciate them zoning, you know, as far as the zoning, being able to change some of the zoning. They restricted some, but they certainly missed some of the important ones for us. We own a construction company, H&amp;W Construction, and we know how our lot can end up being, you know, looking on times with different trucks and that kind of stuff. So what we're, our main concern is, there's a couple. Our main concern is what B3 can be other than this. If it's Discount Tires, they may run a professional organization. Do I think they're going to be here 100 years from now as Discount Tires, still hiding everything and closed on Sundays and that kind of stuff? Probably not. But, you know, you've got, you've got some other things, like the SIC codes that were provided on this, 15, 16 and 17, we'd like to see restricted, which is offices and storage facilities for building construction and contractors, heavy construction contractors and special trade contractors. I'm sure that their yard would not look the same as Discount Tires. Motor freight, transportation and warehousing number 47, transportation services. I'm not sure what that could be, but that could be taxis and that kind of stuff, and I may be wrong on that particular point. We'd like to see 52 be eliminated, SIC 52, building materials, hardware, garden, mobile home dealers. You know, it's not a large site, but I can certainly see if B3, it's by right, somebody comes in, puts, sets up a couple of mobile homes there, and they go to sell mobile homes, they don't necessarily, they may have five acres somewhere else where they bring the mobile homes to you, but, you know, it says here on B3, the mobile home dealers. Also, number 75, automotive repair service and parking, I believe that's probably where Discount Tires comes from, but under that zoning, but there are several, several places, you know, that may, may have heavier, you know, broken-down cars and that kind of stuff sitting there in the lot waiting to be repaired. You know, that's certainly a concern for us. Self-storage facilities is a concern for us. Basically, we do appreciate them zoning some of it out, but taken from a hotel and some restaurants and in our office building, we just think that it's going to, over time, certainly cause our property potentially lose some value. Also, if you look at this picture here, we own the building to the bottom left, which is a three-story office building with a penthouse on top. And if you look at the bays, you know, as we drive around our parking lot, and I know that everybody's here has been by places that have bays, there's this thing called spring and fall where those bay doors are going to be up. I mean, all you have to do is go to Lowe's, those bay doors aren't always down. They were down today because I drove, I was in Lowe's, because it was, you know, very cold. But those bay doors are going to be open, they're going to be, they're going to be making noise, there's going to be noise, you know, everybody knows what it sounds like when you're taking nuts off the, off the tires and that kind of stuff. We just think it's a, we just think that that location, being one of the busiest intersections in Frederick County, you've got 522, 81, you've got access there, Route 50, it's not a sightly thing for a B3 to be in there. The, and the screening, you know, they talk about the landscaping, and sure, we've got some landscaping on the front, but if you look at my building compared to that building, I could be looking right into those bays. There's no landscaping, there's no buffer. It looks like they may have two or three feet there of green between their parking lot and my parking lot. That, we feel, is a problem. Rohan, the Travel Lodge feels it's a problem. The building's attractive from the back, but, you know, we just, he's concerned about what's going to be sitting out there for how long. And then his concern isn't so much, they have access to get their tires there and people there, but how's a tractor-trailer going to turn around there? Is it going to back, back out? Is it going to use his parking lot? He's got an access there, and he's got, I don't know, five or six acres, and it would just be, you know, he can just see truck traffic happening in the Travel Lodge parking lot because his... Lodge parking lot because his access is right there at their access. And it just seems like to him someone will pull in and then back in and unload and that kind of stuff. And it may not be tractor trailers, but it'd probably be 40-foot trucks. I, I don't know, they, they can speak for themselves. We, we don't oppose Discount Tires. We just oppose it to be right here changing to B3. If, you know, our, our wish list would be for you all to say no to, to B3 because of what the future may, may hold. You know, we've been in business since 1931. I think they said they've been in business since 1960. And, but things change. Most of the Fortune Five, original Fortune 500 companies, only a handful of the originals are still around. And so we would ask you to vote no for the rezoning to B3. If you do vote yes, we would like to restrict the uses further so that, you know, when they go out of business or they decide to move on somewhere else, a lot of these others that I talked about, which, which was 15, 16, 17, 47, 52, 55, some restrictions on 75 and in the storage facility, that would be proffered off as well. And, and we had addressed the issue between a B2 and a B3 on our side with screening, whether it be a fence, because it looks like it's only a couple of feet.
Parish, can you wrap this up real soon?
What's that?
Can you get to the, or time constraints?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. And, and also we'd like to, and the last thing is, if it would be possible, if Discount Tire does come on there, that, and you change it to B3, if they leave, we'd be, go back to B2.
Okay.
Those would be the, our key items.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward? This man?
Becky Morrison, Gainesboro District. I just wondered what this company does with their old tires, what they do with them.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? See, you know, one, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion?
Can I ask?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I did, I missed advocate response. Would Mr. Lawson like to come up to answer?
Good.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Working in reverse order, actually, the engineers were kind enough to give me a, a plot that shows, they've actually tracked how tractor trailers will deliver and, and back up and so on and do it entirely on site. So Mr. Parish's comments were, were timely, but, but if the commission needs to see it, we've, we can demonstrate that that will be accomplished entirely on site. As far as the buffers, right now, there are no buffers between the properties and, and I think they're looking at the back of, the back end of what was the Texas Steakhouse. And so what we're talking about is adding green space and so on where there is not now. Understand the concern about what will happen over the time, and I'll, I'll be honest, I don't think anybody knows what will happen in 100 years and whether the hotel will be there, the office building and, and so on. That's, that's just one of those I don't think any of us can answer. As far as the uses, we actually intentionally tracked and proffered out the uses, we, we followed the Valvoline rezoning, and that's why we did what we did, assuming and believing that, that if, if the county thought that that was appropriate, this would be appropriate here. And then the last is the first. I actually spoke with two Mr. Shaws, an older and a younger, to let them know that we were looking at the property and to talk about issues and being a future neighbor and how to push snow together and so on. I've not seen the letter that you all have seen, so I, I don't know what, what their issues are. I do know from the current owner, they, they had looked at acquiring this site and they didn't arrive at terms. But we have reached out with them, we've talked with them, personally, I've spoken with both. And if their issues were, we're not aware of those, but I wanted to let you know that we had talked to our, our potential future neighbors and be happy to respond to any other questions.
Okay.
I just have one or two. Is all mechanical work going to be done indoors?
It is.
Nothing outdoors?
It's a great question. It is, and they've emphasized that to me, Mr. Ambrosi, that again, with no outside storage, you see some places with tires stacked outside, do work outside, all inside.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Oates?
Just the lady's question about the, what happens to the old tires, you know?
Yeah, I was on the same page. I wanted to come up and answer that. What Discount Tire does enough volume where they contract with a national tire recycler. So all that storage is interior to the building. There is what they call a dead tire room where they stack these. And then two to three times a week, depending on the sales volume, they have those picked up in a van truck and hauled away for recycling. So all that storage is, is interior to the building and taken away for your pretty standard tire recycling, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good. This is Shawnee District.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of rezoning 07-19.
Second.
Motion. And we have a second. Start now, Mr. Moan.
Moan, no.
Dawson, no.
Trump, yes.
Morrison, no.
Malden, no.
Klein, yes.
Marston, yes.
I lost track there. I had two speakers at the same time. You had...
That was no.
No, and you were yes?
Yes.
That was yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and chair votes yes. Motion will go to January 22th Board of Supervisor meeting with approval. Thank you. Our next item is an action item. It's rezoning of Number 03-19 for Berlin Steel and Dennis Ridings. And on this one, I have Mr. Ruddy standing in for Ms. Perkins.
It's the B team, definitely.
The B team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is all business. Of course, it's the Berlin Steel rezoning application, which is a request to rezone two parcels of land totaling 15.39 acres from the RA District to the M1 Light Industrial District with proffers. And of course, the properties are located on the east side of Ridings Lane, south of Fairfax Pike 277, just in the southeastern part of the county. Again, this was all business and the Planning Commission's discussion talked about the land use plan, conformance with the land use plan, and that the M1 zoning was generally consistent with that. But it highlighted two particular points with regards to the proffers, and I'm going to jump right to those. Because the applicant has tried to address, and I'll let them speak also here in a little while, those particular requests by modifying their proffers. So in this case, the applicant has proffered that the land and any improvements there too expressly be used for a metal fabrication business as permitted by the M1 zoning ordinance. And prior to the approval of the next site plan for any facility or structure on the lands, the owner will conduct a traffic count on Route 277 to determine the need for the turn lanes from 277 into the site via Ridings Lane. This will be subject, of course, to the review and approval by VDOT, and should it indicate that anything is necessary, they will have to provide that. The second item dealt with the minor connector road that was shown on the comprehensive plan that was in the general vicinity of this property. So what the applicant has done is provided a 100-foot wide strip of land in the general vicinity of that through the property to enable that to occur in the future with no permanent buildings being erected within that area, consistent with what was in front of you before, the owners have donated, proffered to donate $1,000 for impacts to fire rescue services. To illustrate one thing a little bit more, you'll see the, the area on the generalized development plan hatched on the screen to your left generally indicates that road that was of, a part of the discussion of the Planning Commission previously. Following the, any discussion this evening, we're looking, of course, for a recommendation onto the Board of Supervisors. And this is a public meeting as we held the public hearing previously. Mr. John Lewis is here representing the application again this evening, and I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Before you get away, I believe Mr. Oates has a question?
Yes, sir. On the improvements of 277, that turn lane, no improvements out there can block any of the neighboring properties or take property away from a private individual, correct?
That's correct. If any improvements were identified as necessary based on any analysis that's done by VDOT, the applicant would have to obtain any necessary right of way for that in conjunction with the adjacent properties. They would not be able to impact adjacent properties without their endorsement and approval of that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Morrison?
Based on the fact that traffic studies done today may indicate no turn lane is required. If five years down the road they expand the business and the traffic picks up, who would pay for the addition of a turn lane at that time?
Anytime they submit a site plan for the expansion of their business or modification, then that provides the ability for the site plan to be reviewed, analysis reviewed by VDOT and implemented by the applicant.
Any other questions, Mr. Ruddy? Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would the applicant or representative like to come forward, please?
Mr. Chairman, John Lewis, again. We went over this stuff 60 days ago, and I appreciated the time to go back and redo the proffers and try to address your concerns, and I think we have. The two major points, one is the, the need for a turn lane, again, and I think Mr. Ruddy said the same. We have proffered at the time of site plan, prior to approval of the site plan, to do the traffic study to determine if anything, any turn lanes are necessary. And we all know what VDOT will do if we show that it's necessary. They'll make us put the turn lanes in before we get approval of the site plan. The second thing was the, the minor collector road. We've made provisions for the minor collector road in general conformance with the comp plan. The way the comp plan showed the alignment of that collector road, or the way it shows it today, is not acceptable to the, to Berlin Steel. It's, it would severely impact their operations. It would divide their property. So they have made provisions to reserve an area that is generally in the same alignment. And that has been shown on the generalized development plan. And we're donating a thousand bucks and we're not building any buildings, so I'm not sure how you calculate that one, Mr. Kenny. But seriously, if there's any other questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Lewis? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion? This is an action item, it's not a public hearing, so, and this is our Pecking District. But if there's no further discussions, I'd like to have a motion. It's my Pecking.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Berlin Steel 0-3-19.
Second.
Mr. Marston?
Marston, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oates, yes.
Malden, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Trump, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moan, yes.
Chair votes yes. This goes with approval to the January 22nd, 2020 Board of Supervisor meeting. Our next item on the agenda is also an action item, the rezoning Number 06-19 for the Winchester Medical Center Incorporated. And again, I have Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'll have to recuse from this discussion.
What you have in front of you this evening with the Winchester Medical Center project is a minor proffer amendment, which includes minor text revisions and revisions to the approved generalized development plan for the original rezoning, which was approved in 2003. The application at that time rezoned approximately 37 acres to B2 and 51 acres to MS Medical Support District with associated proffers. For orientation, we're quite familiar with the project or the property. It is immediately west of 37, north of Route 50, again, just west of Winchester Medical Center as you enter into Frederick County. It's highlighted on the screen to your left and with the current zoning of B2 and MS. This particular generalized development plan was very specific and it had uses in identified locations, so that was the main premise why this rezoning came in front, the proffer amendment came in front of us to enable then to remove the specific uses from specific locations and allow the development to occur with the B2 and MS designations in a more flexible manner. There are a couple of minor tweaks to the proffers again that eliminate a couple of landscape features that weren't implemented and also to reflect the transportation modification that occurred since the rezoning. And that, of course, is their access or limited access to the new interchange that is on the north, the northern portion of this property. Again, the new interchange to Winchester Medical Center, so you'll see that proffer in respect to VDOT's comments has been modified. The generalized development plan that is on the screen to your left is the new generalized development plan, if you will, that is part of this rezoning request. I will point out one item very, very briefly, and there's a note on the generalized development plan which seeks to reaffirm what is a commitment that has been made throughout with the adjacent property, which has an entrance proposed and proffered through the Botanical Drive rezoning request, and that is to ensure that the entrance to Botanical Boulevard to the commercial use areas, again, just on the other side of Botanical Drive, is granted by the Winchester Medical Center. Again, that reaffirms an existing condition that occurred throughout the development of these properties. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Again, it is a minor proffer amendment and doesn't necessitate the need for a public hearing, and that's why we're moving it forward, looking for a recommendation onto the Board of Supervisors. Please, and if I could recognize that it is, also has representation here if you have any questions with the applicant.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Ruddy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I've got one. I'm sorry, Morrison.
On the north end of the road connector there to the new traffic circle, is that to be open at any point in time, or is that non-specified at this point?
It's actually quite specific, and I don't know if I want to jump into Mr. Bishop's territory here, but when that access was granted by the Commonwealth Transportation Board for the benefit of Winchester Medical Center, it was very specifically limited to a minimal use and minimal access. And that maintain, that is consistent today, so that hasn't changed. It's not as though this project will be able to open that up and use that to any great extent at this time. Again, that's based on the Commonwealth Transportation Board's approval of that break in limited access for Route 37.
Okay.
The project, I guess maybe if I can clarify some more, the original rezoning back in 2003 recognized approximately 14,000 vehicle trips a day coming from this development. And there are proffers in there that are maintained with this amendment that recognize that 14,000, but also provide the ability for, as development reaches that, negotiations to occur with the county and VDOT on any additional improvements beyond those that were originally proffered with the 2003 rezoning. Again, subsequent to that rezoning, the interchange was built for the benefit of the hospital, which provided a limitation on their access to that point.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Ruddy, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward? Someone need to speak?
Not really.
My name's Daniel Michael with Valley Engineering. How are you doing? Like they were saying, we've worked with staff. It's been a very good process to work through with them. We are not changing anything except the front page of the original rezoning. That's all we want to change. And in the lower left corner, they had a box that said proffers, and they had all the written out proffers, and then they had a drawing that said this 7.7 acres is going to be a warehouse. And that, what that did is that put stip... to be a warehouse. And what that did is that put stipulation, that's the only place we could put a warehouse on that property. That's all we're taking off. We're maintaining everything else. You're asking about traffic. We are maintaining the 14,000 trips per day, and we've set a system up where we're monitoring that. And we have to do, once we reach a certain point, we have to do a yearly traffic study to show how many of those trips we are using. When we submit a site plan, we got to say, all right, this is how many we are using, this is how many we're proposing, and we can't go over 14,000. And we're not suggesting we go over 14,000. The gate, you're asking about the access from the roundabout? Forgive me, I can't remember if it's four or 500 cards a day that Valley Health will have. And that's all the trips that we'll be able to go from that, from this project to the hospital directly, by going across 37, or by crossing over 37. They're going to limit that, so it just doesn't open it up. Because that was one of the big concerns with VDOT. And if you have any other questions?
Any questions? Anyone else? Mr. Morris?
On the roundabout, that roundabout doesn't provide access only to the hospital. It also provides access to Route 37.
Correct.
And that would take traffic off of 50 West, which at times is a parking lot.
Correct. And that's why the gate's going in. So, people aren't going to be, if I'm on 37 and I want to get to 50, I can't get off 37 and drive through this development to get to 50.
So, your changes here will not improve traffic situation. It will only make the traffic situation on 50 West worse.
We're not changing...
You're not changing the proffers.
Right.
I'm talking about the actual traffic situation. Right now, that land's empty, and you can't get up 50 West at some points.
You're correct. But in the original, I believe you said it was 2003, there were several improvements that were proffered then along Route 50 that had been done to address how traffic from this development will impact Route 50. That's already been done. Is there any other questions?
None. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddy, why don't you come back and just clear up that, the one point that was brought up there, that this is a development? I think Mr. Morrison brought up a point where, made it sound like we were going, that this was, we're clearing up proffers. This property wasn't built to alleviate the traffic. It was just taking care of the impact the traffic had maybe on the site. But I'll let you...
I'd be happy to. There's quite a list of substantial proffers that occurred during that time, and it was tied into also the Walmart development, Commonwealth development in that area. So, there were quite a significant number of improvements that occurred on Route 50, signalization of botanical lanes to 37 and 50. That all occurred subsequent to the rezoning and prior to the development. There are obviously some issues out there on 37 as you access on 250. As development continues, I would imagine that that will continue to be evaluated to see how it could be improved. But the reality is that this rezoning, when it was approved in 2003, addressed the transportation impacts. But it also included that trigger of the 14,000 trips being generated from this site, which gave the locality and VDOT the ability to get back in and reevaluate those as the development intensity increased. So, there's a way to get back in and work on with this project should their impacts be greater in the future. I will say that the access to the hospital, again, it came after this project was rezoned. It's a game changer, but I think that the Commonwealth Transportation Board's restrictions on the use of that minimize the impact of that. And Mr. Bishop is free to jump on in and answer anything that I've messed up on, but I think we're in good shape.
I think we're in good shape. All right. Thanks, sir. Any discussions? Any questions? This is Gainesboro.
Yes. They have made a lot of improvements here recently, where you were talking about. So, now, I'll make a motion to approve rezoning application 06-19 for the Winchester Medical Center Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to approve, got a second. Now, I'll start, Mr. Moan.
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Triplett, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Malden, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Chair votes yes. This is approved. It goes to the January 8th, 2020 Board Supervisor. Our last item on our agenda tonight is back to a public hearing. It's an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning. And I have Mr. Klein, who's not impersonating Ms. Perkins.
I'm not. Not only is this your last item of the night, it's the last item of the year, so, thank you. The Board of Supervisors, after holding a public hearing on November 13th, has requested that utility-scale solar power generating facilities be revised to a conditional use in the RA zoning district. As such, the proposed change requires a new public hearing on the item that you all considered back in October. So, it's come back before you this evening with that minor change. Again, everything else remains the same. It's the change in the use list. Again, as a refresher, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to add definitions for public utilities, including utility-scale solar power, energy generating facilities, utility-scale solar power, energy generating facilities, and a definition for decommissioning. We also added additional regulations for specific uses that requires solar facilities to make arrangements, including financial security for decommissioning, which is consistent with and as required by the Code of Virginia. And we've also specified that those types of facilities require a site plan review and approval. And again, it only applies to those facilities. And again, this change from the Board of Supervisors is to require utility-scale solar power generating facilities as a conditional use only in the RA zoning district. The intent of this text amendment was to codify solar facilities as an allowed use with a conditional use permit, and to codify recent changes to the Code of Virginia to include decommissioning of solar energy facilities. The text amendment also cleans up terminology for public utilities throughout the zoning ordinance in various sections, as you all will see in the proposed changes. And again, the text amendment does not amend the requirements for other types of utilities, including those facilities owned and operated by Frederick Water. The Development Review and Regulations Committee, or DRC, discussed this item on June 27th, July 25th, and August 22nd at their regular meetings, and the committee supported the proposed changes. This item was discussed by the Planning Commission on September 4th, and the Board on September 25th. And the Board of Supervisors at that time requested additional definitions. That's why we added the definitions for decommissioning and for solar facilities. As you'll recall, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 16th, and you all recommended approval of the ordinance at that time. And then the Board of Supervisors, after holding their public hearing on the 13th of November, requested that utility-scale solar power generating facilities be revised to be a conditional use in the RA zoning district. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this ordinance amendment. And again, solar facilities would be a conditional use under this proposed text. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Klein? See, no one. Thank you, sir. So, this is not a public hearing? Oh, excuse me, it is. I'm sorry, got carried away. I'm sorry. Sitting here looking at another piece of paper. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing. So, we don't have an applicant. We just had that. So, anyone like to come forward to speak on this item? This is your time. And since I got carried away there, I'm sorry. We'll close the public hearing. I do have a question.
Not a question. The DRC did review this. We did discuss CUPs over the summer and decided against it. It's, I mean, the solar panels are not a noise maker. They're silent. Once they're built, it's no different than if it's a orchard out there, probably less traffic, less noise than an orchard. Supervisors have been stating they want to get rid of CUPs out in the RA or limit them. And here, we're going to impose a CUP on something that's dead quiet. So, I'm not in favor of this change. I would recommend denial, once everyone's done discussing it, and put forth what we approved on October 16th, reaffirm that that's what we think needs to go forward.
I agree.
Second. Any other discussion? Well, that wasn't the motion.
Wasn't the motion, yeah.
I know it's our last one of the year, but we'll get it together. Any other discussion? I'll echo Mr. Oats' saying. I thought that we were pretty clear how we expected this and we wanted this, was we did want to limit the conditional use, and we wanted this as a by right. I think we heard from a couple of our commissioners that attended some of the seminars that were provided, and that came back in our committee that it was definitely by right was the way to go. We didn't want it just to be entangled in conditional use. So, I have to go along with Mr. Oats on that. I'd like to see us stay with where we had it before. So, it's a discussion item. I do like to think that it shouldn't be a conditional use permit. It should be a by right. I'll leave it on for other discussion. I see some... Now, ahead, Mr. Moan?
I would just say, I think that, you know, I agree that a lot of what's proposed with the solar generation can be done by right with performance standards, and I certainly supported that. I think if the Board has suggested a concern with that, they probably have a good reason for indicating that. But I think beyond that, there are potential other impacts that are associated with this. So, I could see where having a CUP, the utility of a public hearing, at least advising and notifying the public, is beneficial. So, I could at least see that angle. Whereas, you know, I totally agree with Commissioner Oats that the other impacts are negligible compared to a lot of things. But, you know, I'm comfortable with this moving forward, and supporting it based on the direction of the Board. And I think that, you know, there could be some utility to the CUP process.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Morrison?
I'm generally in favor of this. My concern is the scope of these things. If you put a solar panel system out, the scope could be generally quite large and have a distinctive impact on the community and neighbors. I like the process having an additional review step in there on that. If we could limit scope, I would be more than agreed to go to by right. But if we have no limits on scope, I have some serious concerns.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Oats?
Well, I hear what you're saying. These projects, though, can be $30 million, up to $100 million. And to have something that big out there on a CUP and not a by right to a rezoning or something else... If I was looking to put one on, I'd be scared to death to invest that kind of money on a conditional use permit. So, at this time, I would make a recommendation, we deny the ordinance as written before us and reaffirm to the Board of Supervisors of our October 16th proposal that went forward.
Second.
Got a motion to deny, and I got a second. I'll start down with Mr. Marston. And remember, if your vote yes of yes would be a vote to deny, so...
Yes.
Mr. Ambrogi?
Yes.
Yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Malden, yes.
Morrison, no.
Triplett, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moan, no.
And Chair votes yes. So, the most, this item is denied. It goes to the Board Supervisor on January 8th, 2020 with a no vote, the denial, yes vote for denial, excuse me.
Or another motion that we...
That is our last item on our agenda. Our next item is other. This time, we usually announce what our next meeting is. I believe we have one coming up on January 15th, 2020.
We do, so we can cancel the January 1st one.
Okay.
Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and good health to everybody.
I'll echo those. Merry Christmas, Happy New Years to all. And if we could get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you. We're adjourned.